Good evening. I'd like to bring, call this meeting to order. Anyone wishing to make a motion to approve the agenda is ready?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could we have a raise of hands, all in favor? Opposed? All right. First order of business is, is where any new members?
I, Michael Germano. I, Michael Germano.
I, Michael Germano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the planning board.
As a member of the planning board.
Of the town of Zebulon.
Of the town of Zebulon.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is the election of officers. I have a question. What order of officers will we be elected? From me down or?
I'm the chair.
Okay. Chair's ready to accept nominations for chairman?
I want everyone at once.
Is there any nominations?
I motion to nominate Jean Lough.
Second.
As the chair.
All in favor? Opposed? He carries. Thank you. All right. Next is the TA training.
There's also the nominations and appointment of a vice chair person as well.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. The chair would like nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Larry Ray.
Okay. Any other?
As a point of clarification, I apologize. Larry Ray has decided not to be reappointed to the board. He will, he's willing to serve until his replacement is provided, but he would not be eligible to serve in an executive role.
May the chair make a nomination? May the chairman make a nomination?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Johnson.
That's a good one.
Second.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay. Is there any other nominations? Okay. All right. TIA training?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on reappointment. My condolences, I'm not sure which one. As a quick housekeeping thing, tonight there's going to be two training presentations that are going to be provided. The first is regards to traffic impact analysis, and the second will be conditional rezoning and plan developments, kind of an overview, and getting really into the details of the statutory as well as regulatory components of those. One thing as a housekeeping item is that this is recognized as a planning board meeting, and it was duly noted as such. We do have members of our Board of Commission in attendance tonight. I do ask that if you do have any questions following the presentation, you provide those to me, and we'll work to coordinate. That way we're not violating any Open Meetings Act or any of those circumstances. But with that, I'm going to introduce Jessa McClure. She's with Remy Kempin Associates. She is a professional engineer, and is far more versed in traffic impact analysis than I am. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Mike said, I'm Jessica McClure with Remy Kempin Associates. I am the State Traffic Engineering Lead for the public sector. So we have a public and a private. Private's TIA, it's the developers that are coming in and all of that. I jumped out of that game a couple of years ago. So now I'm on the public side, helping, helping all the municipalities and DOTs. So what we're going to talk about today is traffic impact analysis. What is it? Why are we doing it? How do we get it together? And what do we need to take from it? There's a lot of technical information in there. It can blow your mind out, the, you know, the reporting that's required by some places, by DOT. So really just kind of want to go through it with you guys, give you an overview of how it's done, give a few more details, and then kind of pull back out and see over, and then get into the good part. I guess the no, can the planning board ask questions? Okay. And then we'll get into the discussion. So I'll go through the presentation fairly quick here, and then we can get to the good So what is the purpose of a traffic study? Well, it's a short-range planning document that you want to use to get a snapshot of the transportation network in a specific area that a development's coming into. You'll get a snapshot of what's there, how it's operating now, how it's going to operate in the future, and then how it's going to operate when the site comes in. In the report, they need to identify the anticipated impacts. So is that signal, is your weight going to increase there? Is, you know, there going to be another 20 cars in that line coming off the minor street that you sit in? You know, kind of identify those things. And then what the developer's proposing to do to mitigate those impacts to a point that's reasonable or feasible, and that also meet the UDO. And if they're not meeting the UDO, then there needs to be a justification of why. Sometimes there's scenarios that come up that happen, that, you know, you just can't, the developer's putting in 50 houses. He can't build a four-lane bridge going across a creek is usually the one that comes up. So these are used in land-making decision. I know you guys are going through the land use plan process right now to help that. But the biggest part there is that last one in the gray is protecting the investment in the street system. You know, growth is, is coming, and you want to, you guys are ahead of the curve here with the stuff you have in the UDO and kind of recognizing this early on. So I think it's going to be putting you guys in a really, really great position as opposed to some other places that, that didn't quite get there quick enough. So what does the TIA process look like overall? First, we get the project. We got to understand what's there. What's the development coming in? Does the developer want to put it in? How much traffic is it going to be? Just kind of the basics of it. Then the key part here is coordination with the town and DOT and the developer to determine the scope of the study. What intersections are in it? What's your traffic that's coming out of it? What other developments are around there? Does anybody have roadway projects in there? And we document that all in a memorandum of understanding, so it kind of keeps everybody on the straight and narrow. There's no going back, there's no, oh, I don't remember that from that meeting. It, it just lays out the ground rules for everybody. Inventory existing conditions, so go out, get your laneage, your speed limit, traffic counts, traffic control that's out there. Analyze those existing conditions, so you have a baseline of, yep, this is how it's operating. Add traffic from general growth and approved adjacent developments. This is where it gets a little, a little interesting, and we'll go into it in detail a little bit longer, a little bit later. But we account for general growth in the area, projects that aren't necessarily on the docket, but, you know, may be coming, you know, the Smiths down the road may be selling their farm to, for a development, but it's nothing that's concrete. The only thing we have to go off of is the approved projects that have been done. We know those are coming in, we know they've been accounted for. And again, any funded roadway improvements that come in with that project, or that DOT might have coming through the area, or LAP projects from the town. Then we'll analyze the no-build scenario and get our future baseline. So this is what it's going to look like in the future without that development coming in, whether or not it's there. That's what it's looking like. Calculate the site trips, put those on the network, and then analyze what we're calling our build scenario. You seeing a pattern here? Collect, analyze, collect, analyze. After we have our build scenario, we identify any decreases in the metrics we're using, whether it be level of service, delay, or queuing between the no-build or background improvements without the development, and the build to see what their impact is. We recommend some improvements, what we think's reasonable, proportional, feasible, meets the guidelines. The report thing goes in for the town and DOT to review and provide comment on, and that can go back and forth a couple of times, or, you know, get a meeting together and just kind of, I don't like to use the word negotiate, but work out the improvements that are going to be required. So we address any comments, and then everybody's got to agree to the improvements. So a little more detail about those steps. As part of the scoping that we talked about with DOT and the town and the developer and the traffic engineer is, what's the proposed development, and what kind of trips are we looking at? Is it, you know, a large residential area? Is it a large retail? Is it a school? Is it business? Something along those lines, because that's going to impact the rest of the study. The trips are calculated out of what's called the IT Trip Generation Manual, and that is compiled of hundreds of sites around the nation. It's a national industry document, and it takes real data and tries to, you know, cram it into a formula there. And so it's a consistent output of the expected trips. So that's pretty standard across the board. And then, does it meet the TIA thresholds? If, you know, if we're not hitting 100 trips, well, do we really need to do a whole traffic study? Or can we do a trip generation letter, which summarizes the trips that are coming and what might be expected? Because if it's a rather small development, they might agree to, yep, we'll put turn lanes in at our driveway, and we're good to go, and, and we're moving on. Where are those trips going to? Where are they coming from? That's part of the key, key element there. And that's based off of, again, what type of land use is going in, the existing traffic patterns in the area, or the future traffic patterns. If there's a bypass or a new road connection expected to open up, then we need to account for that. Other future developments, if we're building residential, is there a retail center somewhere that they're going to be coming to and going from? Is there an employment center, say a very large one, right off the freeway that they might be going to? That, that kind of drives our, our distribution of trips throughout the network. And then also, what intersections should we study? And that's laid out, the UDO has laid it out very well. Again, you guys are ahead of the curve in that one. That kind of puts a, puts it in a pretty clear light, and there's no, well, we might want that intersection, but not really. The other approved adjacent developments, again, what traffic do we know is approved and could be out there at a certain point? Funded roadway improvements as well. What about other traffic that might come through eventually? That project that's up the street that we don't know when it's going to happen, it hasn't been approved? Well, that's where we develop a background growth rate to kind of encompass future traffic volumes that we don't know specifically, but we feel like it's probably going to be there. And that's based on historic trends, and also discussions with the town, and the growth that you all are seeing, and you think it might continue. It's usually between three, I believe Johnston County goes up to 9% in some cases, which is a lot of background growth. But in, in that range to account for stuff, the, the variabilities that we just don't know right now. So data collection, vehicle counts, traffic, pedestrian counts, we get truck volumes, land configurations, traffic control, is it a roundabout? Is it a signal? Is it a stop sign? Speed limits? Are there signal plans for that signal? Is it running in a system, or is it just on its own? Check out what's going on in the field now to make sure that the model we create is replicating as close as it can be to what's going on out there. Just one of those legs that that signal back up beyond, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet, well, we need to know if that's happening now. So just kind of make sure there's nothing funky going on, or if people are making illegal movements, that one comes up a lot, U-turns and such like that, to, to make sure we can clean the data and get that stuff out of there. Any other approved traffic studies in the area typically get that from the town or DOT. And other information that can be requested. If there's a crash history out there, or concerns over, you know, transit might need to go there in the future, or sidewalks or something like that, we can add those in and make it a little more robust of a study. Site information, again, what, what land use is going there? What are the primary trips coming out of it? There's pass-by trips. Pass-by trips are trips that are already on the road that stop on their way to another destination. So if you leave tonight and go to the gas station on your way home, congratulations, you're a pass-by trip. You are going to keep going, you're not coming from here to the gas station and back, that's a primary trip. You're coming from here to the gas station to home. So you have passed by on your way there. So that counts as a reduction in trips, because you were already on that roadway, you just now decide to make a turning movement. Internal capture is kind of the same way. If you have a mixed-use development, maybe there's retail on the first floor and office on the second, and then there's apartments in the back of the development, and, you know, people can walk between those, and they're not necessarily leaving the site. So those are the kind of reductions that we can look for based on the type of the development. What are the driveway types? Where are they being proposed? Do they want full movements? Do they want a full movement signal 200 feet from another signal? Do they want, you know, six driveways along one roadway? We got to figure that out. No, they can't get that. And then, is the development going to be coming in all at once, or are they going to phase it several years out? And that'll help with determining the timing of improvements that they need to contribute. Analysis, what does the existing condition look like? And the no-build scenario, what do those look like? Those are kind of our standard baselines. And then again, the analysis of the build condition, what does that site traffic do to our network? Pop forward here for a second. Speaking of level of service, here's a visual, better than the NC DOT one, I think. But if you look at it, it, level of service ranges from A to F. A's great, F's, hmm, not, not so great. Typically LOS A through D are acceptable. D is kind of that threshold where it starts to get, eh, breaking down, maybe not that good. You guys are ahead of the curve, because I do believe you are at LOS C, so your roads are going to be running fantastic in the future. E, City of Raleigh, for instance, accepts a level of service E on heavy corridors, on Capitol Boulevard, on Wake Forest Road, because there's just, they know, it's not, you're not putting any more lanes in there. It's, you just got to try and mitigate as much as you can. LOS F, there are some locations that allow it because it's that bad, but this is also used if you want to promote pedestrian activity, or people to use transit, or bikes. If you make those accommodations on the roadway, your traffic level of service is going to be reduced. And in that situation, some municipalities say, you know what, that's okay, we'll go with a level of service F here, because we have all these other things that people can use instead of driving on the roadway. Okay, so potential improvements that you look at, new turn lanes, new signals, adjusting signal timings, restrict the access, change it. Maybe they don't get a full movement. Maybe you get a leftover, which is a right-in, right-out, and a left turn in, but no left turn out. Maybe you're encouraging other modes of transportation for people to get to your site. And then there's some other options if things aren't working. It gets a little bit, a little bit dicier, but we try not to go, go there as far as changing the site plan, or density, or things like that. All right. So these recommended improvements, what do we need to accomplish with that? They need to be feasible and proportional to that development's impact. They are not here to fix existing problems. Unfortunately, that would be a just fabulous pot of money. But we need, if the turn lanes need to go in, or an additional through lane needs to go in, that needs to be balanced. What is this developer really putting out there? Is he putting, you know, I've got an example coming up, is he putting 80 cars on 1,500 cars in an hour? Well, he probably doesn't need to build that extra through lane, but he could contribute to something. The improvements need to satisfy the UDO. Make sure we're meeting LOS C, or if it's a D or an E, that they don't make it any worse. And if they're not, why aren't they doing it? And we'll talk about why not level a service A or B for everything in just a second. I know that's a dream world. Reviews and approvals, NC DOT and the town review the study, and they provide comments, and either analysis is adjusted, or additional scenarios are put out, or they say, okay, we agree with your analysis, but we want X, Y, and Z additional improvements, or we agree with your analysis and your improvements, we're good to go. DOT legislatively has 40 business days to review a TIA. It's a long history, and so that's been written into law, that they've got 40 business days to review the study and either provide you with comments or an approval. And they do work very hard at that, and a lot of times they're ahead of that schedule. So that's really been a great, a great thing, and encourages the coordination throughout the process, so that, hey, this is getting submitted tomorrow, just want to let you guys know. Or, hey, we think we've got this issue, this is how we're going to address it in the study. What do you guys think about that? Everybody needs to agree on the improvements and know what's going on. And then at the end, for DOT roadways, they hold the developer accountable through their driveway permits. So if you don't build your turn lane, you cannot put your driveway on a DOT roadway. You will not have access. So that's kind of their, their leverage that they use to make sure they're not just putting driveways everywhere, and people are sneaking out of their improvements. So why not LOS A or B for everything? Here's, here's a quick example. This is NC 98 and Olive Branch up in Durham. This area is starting to see a lot of development. Right now, it's a pretty rural character out there, and a lot of folks are coming in. So this, a little difficult to see, I apologize for that, but we've got a single through lane east and west with some turn lanes. Northbound, we've got a left and a right turn lane out there now. Right now, that's operating at a pretty significant F in the afternoon hour. You can see that 1,400 trips going through there. Traffic lane typically handles about 1,200 to 1,300 an hour, so they're, they're really pushing it there. To get this without even considering a development, but to improve this to a level of service B, it takes two through lanes on each side, which require additional receiving lanes on the opposing sides, and then dual northbound left turn lanes as well. So that's a lot of, a lot of pavement that's put out there. So if we put this pavement out there, that's great, and it's operating at LOS B during peak hours, well, your other 20, 22 hours of the day, you don't need that pavement out there, and now you've just got, you know, an investment sitting out there that's not really being used. So that's kind of where the LOS C and D and E come into, is what, what makes sense out there? What's economical and helps relieve the issue? So how do we interpret the TIA? What are the existing traffic issues in the study area? That's the first thing it'll show us, so we know what's out there, and gives us an idea if money becomes available for other projects down the line through LAP funds, or DOT's giving away money, or something like that, we know, hey, we've got a hotspot here, we can try and look at this. What are the traffic issues in the future? And then, what does the site do to that roadway network? How bad is it? And what are the improvements that the developer's going to offer to do to fix it, essentially? Again, are all changes in LOS equal? Not necessarily. Wow, that's really blurry, sorry about that. It's an exponential scale, essentially. Once you start getting into an LOS F, you, you start adding one or two trips at a certain point, it's going to give you an extra 20 seconds in delay. It, it's just falling over the edge. So for a signalized intersection going from a D to an E, well, if it was 54.4 in the background, and now it's 54.6, it's going to report it as it went to an E, and you're dealing with fractions of a second. So that's another consideration of how big are our impacts really? What are we not doing with TIAs? It's not a comprehensive, widespread traffic plan for the town. It's a localized area, it's not every intersection along a corridor, or things like that. It's not the what-if scenarios, the what-if that site, that's not this project, develops into something else. What if we close that road and have to have people here? That, that's outside the realm typically of the responsible, of the developer's responsibility in providing this analysis. It's not a tool to try and get a, a one-up, a supersize it, and throw in an extra intersection here or there, because you think there might be a problem. You know, again, across town, if there's an intersection, if it's three miles away, that's, that's a hard sell of why, why they need to be studying it. So it's, sometimes you get lucky and can get, get some extra intersections in there that make sense with it, but it's just not an overarching plan. It's, it's specific to the development in the area around it. So with that, I know I kind of flew, and I'm sure there's a lot of stuff, and in my head makes sense, but let's talk about it. I know there's questions, comments, concerns, so here to help, happy to help.
I've got just a general question. Some of this is new to me as far as, I know what a TIA is, but who typically orders the TIA? Is that something the town does, or?
The town can. It's typically a developer. Like if Sheets wants to come in, they'll call us up and say, hey, we're looking at a site at the corner of this and that. You, we know, we've got 20 pumps, we're going to need a traffic study. There's a couple of different ways to handle it. Some municipalities have the developer go through them, and we are, we work through the town. So the town's kind of the intermediary, where the developer doesn't have the, the influence, the developer can't talk to us, essentially. And so they don't have the influence for the, hey, what can we work out here? So there's a couple of different ways to do it, but it's typically a developer that's, that's coming in.
And they're absorbing the cost as well, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And just to follow up, we do have a section in our UDO that specifically requires when certain parameters are met, the developer is responsible for not only doing a TIA or having an engineer do the TIA, but we will have a pre-scoping meeting before the TIA is done, and we'll sit down, look at where those intersections are, so they have a good understanding of what our expectations are even before that TIA is created.
My question that I have is, if a developer falls behind, doesn't do what he said he's supposed to do, what action is taken in regards to that developer?
You want to handle that on the town side, huh?
Yes.
I don't know how you guys.
Trying to think of a hypothetical situation, that's not project.
Well, let's just say that he's supposed to put in some type of turn lane into his subdivision, he doesn't do it.
For residential development, as an example, depending upon the details of the TIA, there's particular thresholds that are required before certain, or for when certain improvements will be made. You have to, once you hit 100 certificate of occupancies, it requires this turn lane put in. If they refuse to do so, we stop permits. We do not allow them to continue, because they have not satisfied that requirement.
So if you had a shopping center like where we have Walmart, and there's land out there that isn't developed yet, but might be in the future? How do you do, how do you deal with that shopping center developer if they do not do stop permits, or?
Well, if a shopping center is required per their TIA to make certain improvements, we don't give them the certificate of occupancy, so they can't occupy that building. If a new development came in, let's say hypothetically, there's the vacant area next to Walmart, as an example, they'll have to do a new TIA based on their traffic components, and like Jessica was saying, they'll take a base analysis of what's already there and determine, okay, my development's going to decrease it to a level of level of service D, for an example. They're going to need to provide either rationale and why that's acceptable, or the site improvements to bring that back to a level of service C or better.
Okay. Thank you.
And DOT, or DOT kind of operates on the same level with their driveway permits. That's usually the last thing, and they come out and check your site, and check out all your stuff, and if you haven't done all of it, they hold your driveway. And if you haven't done all of it, they hold your driveway permit.
Thank you.
I have a question, Jessica.
Sure.
Is much of the debate with the developer focused at the time of the scoping meeting? You mentioned you might get them, get them to agree to, to look at that intersection three miles away. Is there a commitment to do something by agreeing on the scope upfront? Or can the scope ultimately be broader than the, than the final improvements are agreed upon?
It can be broader. And several times, in several instances, it is. And I'd have to go back to how the UDO is written. I know some locations, if it's a bad intersection that's out and, you know, there's six other projects, DOT's got a TIP project coming in there, you're putting in seven thousand houses, all right, we need to make sure this, this isn't a thing. So you might have to identify what it would take to raise that level of service. But then there's the, if you add, you know, a handful of cars on top of something that's really bad already, that's kind of one of the justifications of, we're one percent of the total traffic there and that's why we're proposing either, yeah, we'll propose and we'll do this, or that's why the developer thinks they don't need to build that second lane. I don't know specifically for.
Yeah, I, I don't have the exact language memorized, but essentially like Jessica mentioned earlier, it's about proportionality. So if you get a really large development, let's say we get something that comes in next to Barrington as an example. Well, let's, once again, say it's approximately a thousand homes. That thousand homes, given that location, is going to have a significant impact, not only on stuff on the old Bund corner, but it's going to have an effect on Pierce's and Proctor, it's going to have effect on Pierce's and Arrendal, Proctor and Arrendal, Green Pace, it's going to have effect on thirty-nine at the, not only where it meets the freeway, but also where it meets Old Two Sixty-Four. So in that situation, because of the scope and the proportionality of that development is, has magnitude that's going to have a much broader impact, during the scoping meeting, we'll address those locations to have them justify, okay, either they're studied and there's no improvements made, or they're studied and if it decreases in service for those intersections, then improvements will be necessary.
If, let's just, we already know that Arrendal, I guess you said north of Arrendal's, going out towards Sheets is a, a left-hand turn issue. Left-hand turns are an issue, but let's just say the vacant property just beyond the credit union, someone's looking at that. What are the parameters there when we already know, we say that TIAs are not to fix problems, but we already have a problem? How does all that come together? Or is that just a very broad question?
No, that is a huge question to all of these things and it varies.
I mean, the, the developers, I'm sure responsible for portion, but then we all already know of a problem there, so how, how's that just generally handled?
There's two big variables with that. First of all is the increase in traffic that that development would, would result in, where the developer will be result, or need to accommodate improvements along that corridor to address that. Because there is an existing issue, that's part of the other side of what Jessica's going to be doing in our transportation plan update. That's already a significant problem. And having it in the transportation plan opens up the opportunities for additional funding through, through Campo, through Federal Highway Commission, several other opportunities. But the part of, the base part of that is making sure that's in the plan addressed as an issue and then coming up with a long-range solution as opposed just to a quick fix based on increased traffic for one development. We do have some things that we're working with NC DOT on right now in terms of our north of Arrendal improvement plan. Unfortunately, because of a whole host of factors going all the way back to the tornado last year, that project's taking much longer than any of us would like.
And just depending on if it's an actual roadway or if it's somebody, a turn into somebody else's driveway, that, that's kind of a hairy subject. One developer changing access to a different developer and that's when DOT usually gets involved. And DOT reserves the right on all their roadways to change your access at any time if there's a safety issue and you, you deal with it. So in the study, we would just want to make sure that the traffic for that development isn't exacerbating the issue that's out there. Not necessarily fixing it, but if they're adding fifty lots to that for some reason, all right, well, now we got to look, look at seeing what we can do there.
Couple, couple of questions. I've seen this in other municipalities and planning boards, so I think it's useful to think about. Can, when a developer comes in and they're presenting their TIA, can you talk about how they generate those numbers and when the study is, is done, it's at like peak hours? And a lot of times questions from the planning board will be, well, it's really bad at the school at this time. And so how's this traffic going to impact those roads at this time? And so how do you pick a time to measure and how does that affect it?
Sure, for most developments, it's the, a typical weekday AM and PM peak period, so typically seven to nine in the morning and four to six in the PM, the, the commute hours. Schools are a very special case. They, the morning overlaps, so it's, it's a pretty intense, you know, thirty minutes while people are there dropping off. But then the afternoon, it, it doesn't typically coincide with the peak hour of that roadway. But typically, it's a morning and afternoon peak hour. And in the study, what you'll see, it's, it's one-hour chunks. It's one hour in the morning, the worst hour in the morning, and the worst hour in the afternoon. The trips that are generated are what's this development going to have coming in and out of it at that worst peak hour in the morning and that worst peak hour in the afternoon. So it's pretty conservative, worst-case, you know, kind of stacking of trips. Because what we do is we run it, I don't want to get too far into details. You can run the trips either as a generator when the peak hour of that, whatever development's coming in is, or the adjacent street that it's on. And we typically run it, we want to know what's coming out of there when that adjacent street is really, really busy. Because if it's not really busy, well, we've got room to, you know, kind of accept some trips, so that's fine. So it's a morning and an afternoon peak hour. Sometimes we'll do a Saturday midday for retail developments. Some recreational facilities will have Saturday or evening peak hours. If it's, you know, weight competition center over in Morrisville, they've got soccer games and everything else from six PM on and that, you know, that, that's a special case. So you can add to the peak hours, which is something that would be decided in the scoping of which ones to actually study.
Thank you. And I think, and I think a great example of that is Five County Stadium, where you have baseball games, taking into consideration the traffic that's generated when those games let out. Typically, that doesn't occur in a standard peak hour, so that's a local example of one of those exceptions.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's any questions, let Mike know, give them to me, I'll be happy to respond. And I appreciate you all letting me come out here and talk about TIAs. I know it's not the most interesting topic in the world, so hopefully you're lively and ready to go for the, the rest of the meeting there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is conditional zoning and planned development training.
Okay. I'll give Stacy a moment to hand these out.
Let me say, I believe, because from here on out, we have seen, we, our board have seen that, but we have not seen this part of the presentation. So thank you for what you do and I'm going to.
This is a, the presentation that the Board of Commissioners has already seen. Okay, this part two, hers must have been more exciting than I thought. This part two is regarding planned development and conditional zoning. When we adopted the Unified Development Ordinance, we ended up introducing two additional tools to the toolbox for the, for both the planning board as well as the Board of Commissioners to work on. The first is planned development, also known as a PD. It's permitted under section two point two point one three of our Unified Development Ordinance. Essentially, this creates a big picture of a development as opposed to kind of piecemealing developments. You see these mostly in mixed-use or a mixture-of-use development. I say these separately because a true mixed-use development will have multiple uses contained within a single structure, whereas a mixture of uses will have pods or locations where it'll be like a commercial section or a residential section or an office area within a, let's say like a business park or something like that, where the buildings themselves might only contain one use. And the uses and activities typically will work in synergy with each other. A lot of these will, for example, you'll have retail close, retail and restaurants close to residential to create a pedestrian atmosphere to allow for you hit minimum customer thresholds to make the businesses work. In return, it creates vibrancy within that particular community. Typically, when we see these, they're what's known as bubble plans. You're not going to see individual lots, but you'll see this area is going to be for residential, this area will be for commercial, this area will be for industrial. And they don't all necessarily have to have a residential component of it. Sometimes planned developments will have a combination of office uses and retail restaurant uses mixed in together. The other thing that this does is allows for a deviation from the letter of the ordinance. Essentially, they're writing their own ordinance. They'll pick up particular districts, which will be the base foundation for their regulations, and they'll use that to kind of create the framework. But things such as maximum height, density, all of the regulations essentially create a flexible platform for them to work off of. But it does require it go through a rezoning process, which as you're aware is a legislative process, so it will go before this board before it can go on to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. As an example, this is Peachtree City, Georgia. The entire town is planned development, but this is a really good example of mixture of uses. You have this front section, which is primarily retail and restaurants. You have office uses, some in the back here along with a couple of retails, some of the offices here. And then you can see one of the residential pods in this location. In this particular context, they actually want to step further and broke up the residential components based on different factors in life. They have an area that is age-targeted for more empty nesters, where the individual owned their own home, but the entirety of their land will be essentially a site condo and the HOA will provide maintenance for the land. On the other hand, you have a residential pod that will be more of your traditional neo, neo-classic, large homes where you own the entire parcel as opposed to just the house. But all these are all integrated into this long-term vision of what the community will can be. A local example, this is Wendell Falls. In this situation, they have proposed of four thousand dwelling units and two thousand, or sorry, two million square feet of non-residential. They realize that the residential uses and activities feed into the demand for the commercial activities. In this situation, when this first came up, they didn't show all the individual lots or anything. They showed the general location of, okay, this is where the commercial is going to be, this is where the residential is going to be, this is where the potentially even industrial will be located. But this is a real-world example. The other component of this is if you go there, there's multiple housing types. There's an apartment complex that's under construction right now. You have townhomes, you have several different versions of single-family detached, all within one neighborhood, and it's all regulated based on a set document known as a planned development document. The other of the new tools is the conditional rezoning. We've already had one of these kind of in a light version, but they do get much broader than this as well. It is permitted under section two point two point six of our Unified Development Ordinance. And while it allows for flexibility, it is typically intended for a single use. This could be residential or as we recently saw, a commercial operation as well as industrial. There are some exemptions to this, where you might have a mixed-use plan or a conditional rezoning. State statute does a lot for it, but those are few and far between in terms of actual practicality. One thing that they may do is, and you saw this with the last one, is they can limit the uses to create certainty of what's going to be developed. As with the last one, they said it's going to include all of these uses with the exception not going to include these uses. That way, when they're coming, they're going for approvals before the planning board as well as the Board of Commissioners, you have a good understanding of, okay, it could be one of these, but it's definitely not going to be this. Sometimes they take the exact opposite, where they say, yes, it's going to be this one use as an example. That, that's permissible. The other thing is it allows for flexibility of uses outside of what would otherwise be permitted in that zoning district. North Carolina general statute does not allow for Boards of Commissioners to issue use variances, so this is kind of a roundabout way to introduce potentially additional uses above and beyond what would otherwise be permitted within that zoning classification. But all the other parameters of that zoning classification would, would apply. The other component of that is it allows for a limited site plan. It won't show every detail, won't show the three-dimensional profiles, but does give a better understanding of, okay, it's going to be sixty-foot-wide lots and seventy-foot-wide lots and eighty-foot-wide lots, depending upon which section, or it's going to have commercial. And sometimes even showing, as with the last case, a conceptual idea of what the site plan for that particular lot would look like. It does allow for some deviations, not to the extent of planned developments, but it does allow for a little flexibility. As an example, in our Unified Development Ordinance, we currently require anything that is less than seventy feet in width, the alley loaded. Essentially, they can't have their driveway in front of their house if it's a lot less than seventy feet wide. However, it does allow for, there's a specification there that allows for a ten-foot deviation from that if they go through this process. So it puts limits on those deviations, but still provides the flexibility. Planned development, on the other hand, you can request a forty-foot-wide lot to have a front loaded, depending upon the nature of the context, we may not recommend approval, but it's permissible. As an example of a location close proximity here, this is Leiston Ridge, located off of Hodge Road in Knightdale. This was a conditional zoning, it's a single-use, in this context, it's all single-family detached residential dwellings. Some of the conditions that they applied were for reuse setbacks, there was some site modifications in terms of the location of sidewalks. They were allowed certain flexibilities. In return, it helped the, the planning board and the town council over there have a really good understanding of what exactly it was that was going to be built. So to kind of recap, conditional rezoning, or conditional zoning, they can request deviations from the UDO, they can limit uses, typically intended for a single use such as residential, industrial, or commercial. And they're based on current district provisions. As an example of the last one, the foundation of one of them was light industrial. For the most part, all light industrial conditions applied in terms of the uses unless otherwise the deviations were required or requested. Whereas planned development, they can request deviations from pretty much most of the UDO. They can. They can add, limit, or mix uses. They're intended for a blend of classifications as opposed to just a single-use classification. And while it's recommended that they pick base districts, those base districts can be specific to the pods or the areas, um, that the uses apply. And all of those will be included as part of their plan development document, as well as, uh, a reference map showing which regulations would apply in which spaces. So the question is, what changed? Under the old process, a lot of conditions were applied to our special use permits. As you recall, those are quasi-additional, and those can get very, um, fussy when it comes to who can speak, how they can speak. Whereas the new process is really conditional zoning and plan development. It's also the process that a lot of the other municipalities in around the area apply. As I noted, old process, quasi-additional, required expert testimony. So somebody driving down the street who just doesn't like the owner, okay, he can get up and speak, but you don't have to take that in consideration because they're not an expert typically in traffic or design or, um, the other development factors. The other component was, it was a very binary, yes or no, um, from the Board of Commissioners as well as the Planning Board. There's no negotiation process, and with it being, um, with ex parte communication following an example, you can't talk to the developers ahead of time. One thing that you're probably going to see as we get more of these is you may have a developer call you up on the phone or send you an email and say, hey, I'd like to talk to you about this process. Under the old, um, process with special use permits, that was not permissible. Under the new process, it's legislative, it's politics-wise greatest, um, it allows for discussions. Anyone at the public hearings can speak. There's no expert witness limitations, um, that, the folks who are just driving down the street, if they want to get up and say, no, you must deny this, this is the worst thing to happen to Zeppelin. Okay, you can take it into consideration, but that's based on your judgment of what they said and how realistically or how realistic it is. Negotiations or, or the conditions can be negotiated right up until the point of adoption. As an example, there was negotiations with the last one, we'll get into the parameters in that in a deep, in a bit. But if there's something that you don't like, or there's something additional, you can say, hey, have you considered this, or this, or this? Under the old system, that was not an option. It was, they provided something to you, it was a yes or no if you liked it. And as I noted, under the new process, if a developer calls you up and wants to talk to you about development, it is your discretion whether you choose to talk to them or not, but it's entirely permissible under the state statute and our local regulations. So overall, the process looks like this. It all starts with the applicant coming in for a pre-application meeting with staff. Typically, it's myself and me, Bradshaw, that would meet with the applicant. They provide a very big-picture review of what they want to do. We would typically say, hey, are you aware of this section of the ordinance requires this, or this section of the ordinance requires that? Especially being that we have a new UDL, a lot of the developers are not aware of those. Sometimes we learn some things and, um, there's some things in the ordinance that we're going to be submitting for text changes next, next month too, so. The next step is the neighborhood meeting. This is something new to the town of Zeppelin. Previously, um, somebody could just come in, and the first time the neighbors would hear of it is either when we're pounding a sign into the ground in front of the business or the property, or when they receive a letter about a public hearing. We take a, um, actually a very helpful precautionary step. They're required to have a neighborhood meeting that's totally independent of the town. Our UDL requires them to notify everybody within three hundred feet of the outer perimeter, and they hold the meeting. There's a list of things that they have to do as part of that meeting. They have to show the applicant what's being proposed, the rationale why it's being proposed, and then they have to document any questions or concerns that the, um, the folks bring up, as well as what their response is. We require the, uh, mailing notices to be provided, the list of who receive or who the notice was sent, list of who was there, as well as all the communication activity that occurred there. And all of that needs to be notarized as part of the application process. In order for it to be a complete application, the neighborhood ma, meeting packet must be included. Which brings up formal submitted. Right now, we're still getting all the paper, but that's going to be changing after the first of the year when we switch to electronic for a lot of that stuff. But they submit, and we still work with them in terms of what the conditions are, making sure that they understand, this is what the ordinance says, this is what our comprehensive master plan says, this is what our transportation plan says, and this is what we've heard from both the Board of Commissioners as well as the Planning Board on things that they're looking for. We try to make sure we tee it up, uh, as favorably as possible, so they don't have any surprises. And granted, th- there's always surprise, but we try to make sure that they, the developers have a really good understanding of what your expectations are before it comes before you. And part of this is also a review of our technical review committee. There's technical components as it relates to all these plans and ordinances and everything else, and we're bound by the letter of the ordinances and the plans and what we can regulate at this point in time. If something does not meet the TRC, we do not recommend it. If it, if it's a blatant violation of the ordinance, we can't recommend it. They can still go through, um, and request it, but ultimately, we're going to know this does not meet the ordinance, they have not asked for this as a condition, and then by default, um, we cannot recommend approval. The other component of this is, if something doesn't meet the regulation, we can highlight it at this point in time. We can be, let them know, okay, you, you're proposing this, do you need a, do you want to do this to bring into compliance? Or do you want to request a deviation? As part of that deviation, there's a term that, um, a friend of mine, Chris Hills, who's the Planning Director over in Knightdale, uh, first time I heard the term "alternative means of compliance", and it made sense. Essentially, we want to make sure that the developer and the applicant are still meeting the spirit and intent of the ordinance if they're asking for a deviation. If they want to, um, as an example, have, um, a building way too close to the front property line, okay? What's the effect of that building going to be on that front property line? Okay, what are you going to do to mitigate or lessen the impact of that building being so close to the property line? Same thing with, let's say, um, a developer wants to reduce the side yard setbacks in between residential homes. Okay, well, part of the reason for setbacks is fire safety. What are you going to do to make the homes safer, as an example? And there's things that they can do based on siding materials and architectural details to make sure that they're able to meet those alternative means of compliance. Staff negotiations with the developer, and these will occur typically right up until we write the staff report. And there's been more than a couple cases where we're, we're letting the Board or the Board of Commissioners know that, um, that the applicant has provided additional conditions or modifications. Typically, it's to better the development. As with all legislative hearings, there's a joint public hearing that will be held with your, uh, yourself as well as the Board of Commissioners, um, and then following that, you will make a recommendation, and then the Board of Commissioners will make a decision. Throughout this entire process, as I noted, the developer has the opportunity to further negotiate those conditions right up until the point where a motion is made. That's kind of the stop button, and I've even seen situations where a motion was made, a second, and the developer raised their hand and said, okay, we, can we, um, table the process so we can additionally, uh, negotiate additional conditions? In which case, that motion failed, and then there was a new motion to table. So I've seen situations where the project's getting denied, they quit, are willing to step up and delay the project to possibly seek a favorable opportunity. So this goes back to what we discussed earlier, um, last year when we were providing a basic conceptual overview of these options. We're going to talk about Farmer Johnson again. As you know, Farmer Johnson owns some land. He's looking to get, uh, basically cash in his version of a 401K and sell his parcel. And for years, he's been contacted by Lennar, who's a home builder on the other side of the county. Won't be long before they're out here, but, um, uh, they, they're, um, they've been contacting him, they're interested in his parcel, um, so he finally agrees to sell. But Farmer Johnson's not the only one that they've been working with. He's been working with the McDonald Brothers, um, as well as several others, some who inherited the land who they have no interest in continuing farming. And this is called an assemblage. You're going to see a lot more of these as the large parcels, um, get developed. You're going to see assemblages of these smaller parcels come in. So Lennar technically is the person who's been negotiating with everybody. But during that pre-application, there might be a representative from Lennar, but Farmer Johnson's not going to be in the room, and Lennar's probably not going to do a lot of talking. Instead, they're going to have their development engineer speak with us, and we'll work through the site design components typically with their development engineer. During the site plan review, our technical review committee will review everything in accordance with our UDEO, our comprehensive land use plan, our transportation plan, and soon to be our parks and recreation plan to make sure that's in compliance with all the applicable documents, and giving the developer the heads up if something is not in compliance. So going back to these requested deviations, what do some of these look like? As an example, this is a representative, representation of reduced side yard setbacks. In this context, the applicant agreed to hardy board siding as opposed to vinyl siding because hardy board is less flammable, um, and it creates a kind of a neo-traditional look in this context. Limited uses, as we noted in, um, the last, you know, joint public hearing and planning board meeting, an applicant reduced some of the uses that would otherwise be permissible within that particular zoning district. In this context, um, there's a development that all of the uses are the retail or restaurants. It has a very big push for residential or for a pedestrian-friendly community, and even the retail uses are typically, in lieu of this particular development over in Cary, are more of the upscale, um, uh, retail options. And they also have a cold stone, which is awesome. They could request sidewalks be on one side. In most situations, um, and you'll see a text amendment coming, you know, even make it more so, most situations, sidewalks are required right now on both sides of the street. Let's say an applicant comes in and he only has five houses on a, on a cul-de-sac. Okay, do you need sidewalks on both sides for five houses? I don't know, but that might be a request to, uh, deviation. In return, they might be able, be willing to provide additional landscape. The others is maybe they're requesting a plan unit development, and they go way outside of the book of what's permissible. Here, we have a situation of front low, front-loaded townhomes, which is currently not permissible in our UDO anymore. Maybe they come up with an architectural design that just knocks everybody's socks off and is phenomenal. In return, they want front-loaded. And in this context, it's hard to see in that first picture, but the other pictures, it requires frosted glass garage doors, um, as one of the examples. So it gives the appearance of it still being a non-automobile-oriented development. What might they offer alternative means of compliance? They might require additional landscaping for not only the HOA common areas, but individual residential lots. Granted, I don't think they're going to get anything that elaborate, but, um, they might require additional land or, uh, lot trees in lieu of sidewalks, as an example. The other you're going to see a lot more of is increased pedestrian connections. This particular location is actually a connection to a public greenway in Cary. This particular situation, that greenway that you see there, it's in between two homes, and it's a private, privately maintained greenway by their HOA. It connects into the Cary system, but this not only created an alternative means of, uh, compliance for sidewalks on one side, but also allowed for an incentive for, or, yeah, incentive for the residents who live there because instead of going all the way down outside their development, up and around to get onto the greenway, there's a very convenient cut-through. The other component is, somebody's not trampling across somebody's lawn to get back to the greenway. So it's a dedicated location that's owned and maintained by the HOA. The other thing you'll see frequently, especially in apartment complexes and large residential complexes, is the improved amenities. This picture is actually in Dow, or is it downtown Knightdale, that's funny, is in Knightdale, Parkstone, the development behind the sheets. This is their pool amenity, um, that they have to offer. They realize that, uh, in order to get their, their development approved, they need to make sure that they're able to put in some very attractive amenity features to, to address some of the deviations that they requested in terms of density. Another example of this is the farmhouse at Knightdale Sta, or not Knightdale Station, but Wendell Falls. In this context, they created, um, an outdoor pedestrian gathering area that was visible from Wendell Falls Parkway, which not only served as an attractive feature for those who lived, lived there, but also created additional, uh, restaurant opportunities with the coffee shop restaurant that's inside the farmhouse. Created an additional incentive for folks to live there, in return, made the entire development, um, more enticing. Another big one is, that we're going to talk about quite a bit, is additional architecture features. It can be anything specific to requiring neo-traditional style dwellings to actually specific details. Town of Apex, for example, actually has a buffet list of options that they recommend, are included in all the conditional rezonings and plan developments, where it requires certain things such as, um, the garage cannot project any further in front of the house if it's front-loaded, front porches of a certain percentage of width of the front of the structure or greater, other adornments such as corbels and gables and such, making sure that the houses have a strong aesthetic architectural quality to them. Same thing with, uh, even connections of, uh, detached, or what would otherwise be detached accessory structures. In this context, um, this farmhouse actually has, uh, an accessory dwelling in our mother-in-law apartment located above the garage, where it required a certain percentage, in this context, of homes have those accessory dwelling units because there was a housing shortage in the area, and the idea of affordable housing was very, was not friendly with their particular council. This actually, this location's actually in Tennessee. Which brings back the architectural design for residential homes. In 2015, Senate Bill 25, which was created by the Home Builders Association of North Carolina, put forward regulations, hopefully Mike's not a member of this.
I'm not.
It prohibited municipalities from regulating architectural details at the time of site plan. The really important term there is "at the time of site plan". What Senate Bill 25 didn't address, and it's clarified in North Carolina General Statute 160D-702, is that allows a developer to volunteer architectural conditions as part of the developer's agreement, conditional zoning or plan development. There was some debate on whether that was really permissible or not. Fortunately, uh, 160D, um, which came in effect earlier this year, clarified, yes, it is permissible. So going back to negotiation conditions, why do we do it? What can, what do you notice about this particular photo? This is a single-family detached residential neighborhood.
It's a lot of cars.
Too many vehicles, or the driveway's not deep enough to hold those four vehicles.
Okay, what else?
No sidewalks.
No sidewalks?
Yeah.
Just very minimal landscaping.
How's that different from that?
It's not much.
Landscaping.
But it's those immediate visual details. Of these two photos, and I'm glad our code enforcement officers in the room as well, of these two photos, which one of the two do you think would have a greater number of code enforcement issues? Just based on initial visual. And there's been, there's been studies done that have shown. And there's been, there's been studies done that have shown that in certain circumstances, the details of the conditions that are applied within particular neighborhoods can actually have a positive effect on reduction of code enforcement violations. How that dynamic works with the sociology, that's outside my expertise. I just know that it's reality, it happens. Okay, Harris teeter, wonderful place to shop. What do you think about this picture?
It's bland.
Well, it's a Harris teeter.
It's very bricky.
Very bricky. Word of the day, bricky. What else do you see?
Is that a drive-through in the front of it?
That is a drive-through.
Yeah.
Same.
Interesting.
What about that Harris teeter?
It's beautiful.
It's inviting.
It's inviting.
That's the one down in Flora's Plantation. Both of these are the exact same business. But the effect that they have, um, the visual connotation of what they're trying to represent is totally different. One has a very, I guess, utilitarian feel of, yes, this is a grocery store. The other screams, I am a Harris teeter. And my personal favorite, McDonald's, the corporate company that says you cannot deviate from their corporate brand in any way, fashion, or imagination, otherwise you'll lose your franchise. This is their current, uh, franchise model. And I say current because this is the same one that changes every couple of years. It's not a bad looking location, I'm partially, or I'm partial to be one of the left. But what about that? If you look really closely, the sign above the door says McDonald's.
Oh, I was.
This is the McDonald's in Freeport, Maine. Does anybody know what Freeport, Maine's famous for? It is the corporate headquarters for LL Bean. This is located at the, uh, Main Street intersection, um, adjacent to the freeway as you go towards the corporate headquarters for LL Bean. Fortunately, my undergrad advisor was the planning director of Freeport, Maine when they came through and was telling us the story of when McDonald's came in. They were determined, they wanted to build a restaurant at this location. They were going to tear down the house that was there, um, to the point where they showed up at the border, or at the town council meeting and said, either we tear down this house or we don't build here. And the mayor at the time said, bye. Two days later, they submitted plans to figure out how to accommodate a drive-through onto the back of it, maintain the historic architectural character of the structure. And it wasn't in a historic district at that time. Um, even to the point where they were able to encompass the existing interior floor plan to maximize the characteristic of the outside of this building. Each of the home, or each of the rooms on the first floor, they maintained those rooms and actually put in traditional dining room tables. And as you walk through the front door, where the back wall was, was the traditional counter. And everything behind that was where the kitchen was, where the drive-through was. But it was all integrated into the architectural character of the home. But here it is McDonald's saying that they'll never deviate from their corporate model. Well, if they wanna be here bad enough, they will. And there's tons of examples like this nowadays. So what does one of these condition lists look like? Um, this is an example of, uh, a list of conditions for development in Apex. And that's the end result for those townhomes that are being considered. Um, it actually, there's another five conditions. But it lists out such as, uh, number three, roof line cannot be a single mass but must be broken up horizontally between units when possible. So it's not a single ridge line going across, there's a little bit of flexibility and all that. And it creates distinction in between each of the units. Um, same thing, vinyl siding is not permitted, however vinyl windows and decorative adornments may be permissible. That encourages, um, higher quality materials and also typically fire resistant materials such as hardy board planking, um, brick, stone, other veneers of that nature, which then creates a slight, or at least a safer environment in the events that spark or ember, uh, trigger it. Um, and as we see in the West Coast, it's something that we need to start taking into consideration because, um, vinyl's a petroleum product, it'll go up instantly. But with these additional conditions, we also have to maintain a balance. Um, with additional landscape, more amenities, additional architectural requirements, that does increase the cost of development. We don't want to make the bar so high that it prices developments out of, uh, out of proportionality. Um, but also taking into consideration, what's the value of some of these? Higher property values and in return possibly higher incomes for those who are living within these particular neighborhoods. So something like this will bring in a particular price point, but still provide for, um, a diverse economic profile, being that it's a townhouse as opposed to a single-family dwelling. On the other hand, some of these townhouses are just as expensive. Um, it creates a diversity of housing choices. Not everybody wants a single-family house. Some like the, um, the ease of maintenance of a townhome and a smaller lot. Um, it also increases tax value. If you have a monotony of the exact same architectural style through an entire neighborhood and everything the same color, kind of like you find in some neighborhoods in Cary, for example, where you're driving down the street and every house looks the exact same. Is that really what we want? And yeah, Cary has really good property values because they also require certain neighborhoods to be distinctively different than the neighborhood next to them. And since then, they've even taken a step for more where you can't have all the same housing styles within a development. It also creates a balanced economic profile. Um, with this, having folks in, throughout the entire economic spectrum, creates additional, um, incentives for different businesses to come in. And within a particular neighborhood, you might have some affordable product and some higher end product. In return, they get to utilize the exact same amenity package, um, which improves the quality of life for everybody. Um, diverse employee profile. Um, yeah, CEOs are great, but we also want folks that, um, work at, uh, our police department or our teachers or our grocery clerks. We wanna make sure that everybody can live within Zebulon, not just one particular slice of an economic profile. Um, same thing with housing for everybody. You're gonna see more and more of this over the years. Um, as technology and medicine get better, folks are living to an older age. Um, I know myself, we have a four-bedroom house because we have three little boys that try to destroy every chance they get. At some point, my wife and I are gonna realize, a four-bedroom house is probably gonna be a wee bit big for us. We're not gonna want to live there, so we're gonna look for something maybe more along the lines of a two-bedroom condo or a townhouse. Well, right now, the neighborhood that we live in doesn't have that. We wanna make sure, at least in a community, we have those available housing choices for everybody. Same thing with, uh, folks who are just out of college, um, making sure that they have housing opportunities. Um, corporate CEOs, they need housing opportunities. Um, folks, the mechanics and, uh, tow truck drivers, we wanna make sure that everybody can live within the community that we're in. And the last thing is, unfortunately, with the last, or several developments I've gotten built or approved, the question that you also wanna ask yourself is, when a developer's frustrated with some of this stuff, um, are they looking at Zebulon as the, uh, cheap place to build within Wake County? Or is this the last slice of small-town life? You look at a lot of the other communities within Wake County and they're, they're exploding. Um, in return, the property values are a little higher over there, so it's, it's a little more expensive to do work over there. And here we are at the very edge of Wake County. And there's some developers that, hmm, will explain our U D O regulations. And they'll say, well, I can go down to Johnston County and build that. I'm like, okay. Well, our U D O says this, thank you very much. I don't say that if you wanna build that down there, yeah, um, but we're not Johnston County here. So to kind of recap, what can be added as part of these conditions? Um, rooftop seating for restaurants, fancy amenity package, um, increased buffers. Um, that's something I haven't mentioned yet. Uh, specifically, this picture here is in Cary. There's a residential neighborhood behind that. But as you're driving down Davis Drive, you would never guess because the landscape buffer is thick enough that, um, it actually creates the privacy for those residential homes. And it creates an entirely different streetscape as you're driving along, um, Davis Drive. Uh, connections to greenways in the bottom right one, um, those architectural features for single-family homes. So going back to Farmer Johnson, how does this really affect Farmer Johnson? Is he still looking to sell property? He's still in Zebulon. But let's take a look at the property values. Um, based on a comparable analysis of vacant land, um, over a certain acreage, um, it was going for approximately $60,000 an acre, uh, in Apex compared to that same acreage, same kind of, uh, concept, location from downtown, same details. Only $17,200 an acre here in Zebulon. And both of these, these values came from the Wake County assessed value, um, in comparable size, uh, undeveloped parcels. And it wasn't just one, it was, I wanna say I looked at 50 different parcels in each community. Um, but the big thing is, both of these are in Wake County. Both of these are about the same distance to downtown Raleigh. Um, both of these have the exact same opportunities. The only thing different that Apex might have is a shorter drive to our T P. Um, but everything's moving into downtown Raleigh, it seems like right now anyways. So with these increased expectations, potentially could increase the purchase price in return, increase the amount of money that Farmer Johnson might make when he goes to sell his parcel. Um, the other thing that this might affect Farmer Johnson is this might have an opportunity for, uh, his homestead to get saved. Um, let's say that he lives on a house that was built in the late 1800s. Um, it's the original farmhouse for the parcel. I say this as a real world example, Smith Farm located in Apex, as one of their conditions, um, and they included provisions to put the original farmhouse on the historic registry there, um, include parameters in their document that would allow for it to be used for, um, light office use such as architect or engineer or an accountant or something that's not gonna be a high-traffic generator. Um, and until that occurs, they're going to utilize that as their sales office. In return, it preserves a piece of history of Apex, is representative of what that entire development used to be. Um, and it creates an attractive feature for folks driving by or living in the neighborhood to recognize, okay, this is something more than just a residential neighborhood. So going into the staff's role, um, as I noted earlier, we negotiate as many of the details as we can upfront. Our goal is to make, uh, to provide the applicant the most guidance to receive a favorable, um, uh, outcome, not only before, from you folks, but also to the Board of Commissioners. Um, this process typically takes some time. Um, it's, it's a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails back and forth. Um, but we try to tee it up for the best possible, um, recommendation. And our goal is to always think of the win-win. Not only what is good for the town, but what is good for the neighborhood long-term and the developer. Because we're all here for a certain period of time. The developer typically wants, it's a money-making opportunity for them, um, in most situations, five, 10, typically 10 years, uh, down the road, they're out of it. Um, so they're looking on a return on investment. But the folks who are gonna live there, they're gonna be there for 10, 20, 30 years, if not longer. We wanna make sure that we're looking out for them long-term to have the best possible lasting neighborhood, um, that we can have. What is your role? Um, both the plan development and conditional zoning have particular standards. And you're gonna see these outlined in all the staff parts going forward, as well as there'll be a slide for every time that this comes forward. Um, there's a list of, um, a couple of the big deal ones is, is it consistent with the town's applicable policies? Um, and you can change Board of Commissioners, but also Planning Board, uh, finds the requests reasonable? Um, are they asking for something, deviations that are so far out in the field that's ridiculous? Or are they practical? Um, and, uh, do you find that the request is in the public interest? This goes back to who's gonna live in the neighborhood for 20, 30, 40 years down the road. Um, and as I noted, the negotiations can recur right up until the vote. Um, both are legislative developments, as I noted, which means there, there's no closetage or fun stuff. And everything goes back to the 2030 plan. And what our goal is to find a sweet spot in the middle where the use and activities still maintain the small-town life. Um, even the residential developments outside of downtown, are they gonna help the downtown? Is it creating a diverse economic profile of folks who are gonna live there to expand the opportunities for different businesses to come into downtown? And is it growing smart? Um, like Jessica talked about earlier with T I As, um, part of the transportation impact, uh, those can also be included as conditions as well, where they're going to, um, add additional turn lanes or other components, um, which might, uh, help not only that particular development, but the surrounding area as well. Um, question for you is, is more of the same growing smart? Is it going to be another cookie cutter neighborhood that's gonna be the exact same price point as everything else that we got? Or is it gonna be something different? Will the additional homes have a small-town life character to them? Or is it gonna be a high-rise apartment complex? Or thousand homes that are like four feet apart? Will the development contribute to the establishment of vibrant downtown? And yeah, this goes back to maybe some of the, is it more of the same? Or is it gonna be large lot, multimillion dollar homes where the folks are never gonna come into downtown? They're always gonna go to, um, one of the restaurants in downtown Raleigh or something. So with our vibrant downtown, um, let's say for res, or non-residential, is it going to, um, enhance the building frontages and encourage diverse range of compatible and complementary uses? That's a lot, thinking. Um, is it gonna be mixed use? Is it gonna be apartments on the second floor? Um, are the uses going into that infill development, for example, complimentary to the surrounding uses? These are all things that you can take into consideration. Um, are we gonna be activating our alleys? Um, is it gonna be a space for expanded commercial operations? This is an alley in New Bern. Um, you can just see here, the, uh, you can just see right here, the neighboring business owner there. Um, she's a little bit of an artist and actually went out and did this chalk outline of the wings. It seems like every time there's wings on a building, everybody has to stop and get a photo. Um, but it created, created a sense of vibrancy. But it, the, the alley activation occurred before the wings were there. Um, same thing with outdoor seating. Uh, when you're driving through a downtown and you see a crowd of people standing in front of a restaurant, I don't know about y'all, but I think instantly, that place must be pretty good. Same thing, if you see people outside sitting, eating lunches, you're like, okay, that, that seems cool. It creates, it creates interest in that activity. It actually also helps with pedestrian perception. People typically will walk to those locations. In return, they're walking past other businesses, maybe window shopping, next to another, stopping in and buying something. Um, same thing with residential. New construction can still provide the same character as older neighborhoods with a more traditional feel. Um, it's called neoclassicalism. Um, but here you have the example, this is the same neighborhood where you have homes with sidewalks on both sides, your traditional, single-family detached residential structure. Um, one of the things that we now have in our U D O is requiring street trees between, to be between the sidewalk and the street. Um, because it creates not only that urban canopy, reduces urban heat model, is more environmentally friendly, but it also has a perception. Um, it creates a sense of, uh, safety for those who are walking on the street, or on the sidewalk. Um, same thing with on-street parking. Additionally, you don't get more small-town than driving a combine through your core of downtown. And yes, that is downtown Zebulon. I think that was my first week here, so as I saw that, I'm like, I gotta get a picture of that, that's awesome. Um, preservation of farmland. You're not gonna get this if you don't have a farmland nearby. And same thing with capitalizing on existing facilities. Is the neighborhood adjacent, gonna help sell tickets to, well, Fav County Stadium? Especially if we put a pedestrian connection between the two, I think so. And that's one of the reasons. And that's one of the reasons that we push so hard for that pedestrian connection with Sidney Creek is we realize that's going to be a win for those who live in Sidney Creek. It's going to be a win for the Five County Stadium as well. Same thing, growing smart downtown. You have captive audience if you have people living above businesses. They walk past that business all the time. Let's say, let's say it's a restaurant on the first floor. What do you think their favorite restaurant is going to be? Probably the most convenient one. Same thing with infill developments, maximizing space, outdoor patios in the back locations, creates very nice ambiance. And it's something that a lot of larger municipalities are starting to catch on to, where they're utilizing these, these back alley corridors as seating because it creates an environment that is a lot more relaxing than the hustle and bustle of the interior of a restaurant. Additionally, how's it going to affect public services such as utilities and street maintenance? Emergency service vehicles. We're working through some things trying to figure out the location for our new fire station. Well, is the development at the fringe of downtown, that's going to be outside that four minute response time, how's that going to have an impact on our fire services and emergency services? And as a case study, and I'm glad that's here tonight. This is in Lake Forest. This is a good example of what happens when you say no. And the planning board can recommend denial of a project, you don't have to necessarily recommend approval. And this is a good, really good example. In this context, the planning board recommended approval. This is what's called a cottage neighborhood. Essentially, each of the yellow squares is a single family residential dwelling. All of the vehicles are parked in parking lots and it's entirely pedestrian access up into your units. It's a cluster development in that you have smaller homes on a much smaller footprint. In return, a portion of it, in this case, this area here, is going to get preserved. And granted, in this situation, those are environmental sense of land anyways, but they also included their stormwater retention areas. Part of the difficulty is there is one entrance and exit into this off of a residential street. These adjacent squares here are single family detached, very traditional residential homes. And this is the only access onto more of a major corridor. Unfortunately, it wasn't wide enough to accommodate their driveway. This, the planning board had, or the planning staff negotiated tons of conditions to create the best possible option for them. The planning board recommended approval, but when it got to the Board of Commissioners, there was a lot of public outcry. There was a lot of concern about the traffic congestion that this particular neighborhood is going to bring to an otherwise peaceful residential street located here. In return, the Board of Commissioners told them no, they denied the request. Even really good ideas do not always work in every location. This from a smart growth sustainability concept is a very good development. It's just not a very good location for that particular development based on what the Board of Commissioners determined. Sam, am I missing anything?
No, no, that captured it accurately. It was, there was a lot of neighborhood opposition. And I'll just speak to the difference in QJ versus legislative on these things. So in the past, this might have been a special use permit, right? And so very controlled setting, like a judicial hearing. Evidence and findings based on findings of fact in the UDO versus conditional here where there was interest in it, but there was massive opposition from the neighborhood. And there's, don't get me wrong, there's massive opposition a lot of times and that doesn't carry the day. The opposition alone doesn't do it. But I know that some commissioners came out when they were voting on this, that they, they drove that road right there and decided that road was actually pretty narrow to come into the development. And the developer had originally intended for a drive to go out to that road up there on the map north. But across the way is another road coming onto that street and they were too close to each other. So there was conflict there and they couldn't, they couldn't use that as a drive, so it showed as landscaping there. So my personal opinion was that this one really came down to the traffic impact and the concern of the neighbors. But you know, the concept was, I think, a noble one. And this is close to downtown and there's a, there's an effort in Wake Forest in their policies and community plan to have, you know, denser development closer to the downtown core and less tents going out from there, which is a normal development strategy. But yeah, I mean, planning board recommended approval, came back to the Commissioners, Commissioners denied it. So I don't, and another thing, I don't suspect that's the end of that parcel. I mean, I think something else will come back, but I don't know what that is, I haven't seen it yet.
So things to consider, how will this or any development impact the neighbors? Not only the residential neighbors, but the commercial neighbors. You don't want to tire remanufacturing plant right next door to daycare. Maybe you do, but I would recommend against it. Will this result in a better development? That's kind of the premise of a lot of these conditional zoning and plan developments is you have a set, set of regulations, they're going to ask for deviations from it, but in, at the end of the day, is it going to result in a development that's better than what would otherwise be permissible with the strict interpretation of the ordinance? Does it meet the long-term goals of the town? That goes back to the 23D strategic plan, as well as our comprehensive land use plan, transportation plan, parks and recreation plan. Doesn't encompass the details of all these, at least the spirit and intent of them. Does it satisfy a current or future need of the town? One thing that we have a lot of right now is a lot of the exact same housing styles and types and price points. Fortunately, we're starting to get a little bit more diverse. There's townhomes that are under construction, Weaver's Pond, there's going to be towns as part of the Sidney Creek development. So we're starting to see the beginnings of diversifying our, our needs. But our needs go well beyond making sure that we just have a house style for everybody. Goes into pedestrian connectivity, goes into environmental conservatism, it goes into making sure that we have vibrant businesses in our downtown. Things are getting revitalized in areas, or vitalized I should say, such as around Five County Stadium. We have things that we need to accomplish. So is the development more of the same or is it going to satisfy a need? What will be the impact of our utilities and services? We already touched on this with the emergency of services. But also thinking about water and sewer allocations. We don't own our system, City of Raleigh does. And yeah, we have quite a bit of water, we've been doing some research on that. We actually have more water than land in terms of development scales, but what's going to be the impact? Even though we have that allocation, the infrastructure to accommodate it might not be there. Something the developer is going to have to have taken into consideration as part of their funding, but also how's that going to affect the neighboring existing businesses or residential developments in terms of water and sewer capacities? Is it more of the same? We've touched on this quite a few times. So in conclusion, it's a legislative decision for both plan development as well as conditional zonings. Think big picture. It's not just a, hey, I'm coming in with a hundred lot development, but it's a full encompassing. This is where we're going to have greenway connections, sidewalk modifications, architectural details of houses, opportunity to really think outside the box. Not a rubber stamp. So just because the staff recommends approval, make sure you're really taking into consideration those components. If you come up with a reason that you can't support it, you're not going to hurt my feelings. So I've been doing this long enough that I've been told no a couple of times and you know what? I still show up to work the next day. And sometimes you may bring up a point that I never considered. And it allows for a learning opportunity for me as well. You do, you do not need to say yes, no is an option. We're going to touch on that a little bit more here in a moment. With everything, try to think win-win. Is it going to be good for the town? Is it going to be good for the developers? Is it going to be good for the folks who are living there 20 years down the road? Or the business owner that this is his dream come true or her dream come true to operate this business in this location? Is this going to be good for them long term? You, you can get something by giving away something that they need. They don't want to put sidewalks on both sides of the cul-de-sac, okay? What's the alternative means of plants? Greenway connection maybe, still pedestrian. Going back to this, saying, you do not need to say yes, no is an option. One thing that's important to also note is, conditions can be negotiated, but conditions cannot be applied. When the Board of Commission goes to rule on it, if the developer does not agree to a particular condition that's requested by the, or by the board, the Board of Commission cannot include that. They can vote no instead. So going back to particular situation, if there is something that you really, really want a developer to do that you feel is an absolute necessity to make this development compatible with the surrounding land uses, for example, you can let the developer know that because you're asking for these deviations or because it is adjacent to this particular use, we're requesting that you do this. And let them know that unless they're willing to agree to that condition, you're not going to be able to support the request. The appropriate course of action in that situation is to recommend denial or vote no on, on the approval. That way it gives them the indication that yes, this is a concern. And what's important from this group is, you're the first hurdle for them. Your comments to them give them a precursor of what they can expect before the Board of Commissioners. So if you have, you raise legitimate concerns about something and even if you recommend denial based on particular details or the inability to meet particular conditions, those details go into the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners then will take that into consideration. And typically by that point, the developer will be like, okay, this is a big, this is a hot button topic in this community. We need to make sure that this works. And that's where the negotiations as part of the legislative process come into play because then the applicant can come in, yes, we heard you, we heard the neighbors at the joint public hearing, we're willing to add this additional condition in. Kind of changes the game at that point. And with that, does anybody have any questions? And yes, that is a residential neighborhood. It's in Mexico, but it is a residential neighborhood. I think I knew somebody that was in that yellow house there too.
It's colorful.
Sorry for a lot of chats, a little bit like drinking from a fire hose, but... If you do end up thinking of any other questions, I know that it's a lot of information, please do not hesitate to get ahold of me, you'll have my contact information. I'll be more than happy to sit down with anybody and discuss this further. Obviously, it's something that, I'm a planning geek, I love this kind of stuff. So I'm willing to talk to you guys as long as you want about it.
Anybody have any questions, any discussion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries.